Okay.
There we are, recording.
Okay.
But you can spend the money as long as you spend the money.
So thanks for being here today, everybody. My name is Mike Wickers. Today is Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, and this is the Cottonwood Heights City Council Work Session. The first item on our on our agenda is going to be our review of our business meeting agenda. I have asked our Director of Culture, Records and HR, Callum Melgar, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And then for the council, we will have all of our committee reports tonight as item three. We will have a citizen comment period as as item four. And then we have three separate legislative items to go over tonight in in under our action items. The first one being consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-nine approving an updated affordable housing plan. We are actually gonna just that's gonna be one of our staff reports, so we won't talk about that yet. And then five point two can is consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty, which is designating the National Incident Management System, NIMS, as the basis for all incident management in Cottonwood Heights. It's the training that we did a couple of weeks ago. And Tim, actually, I'll have you address that now before we.
Yeah, we you had asked a couple of weeks ago if we had had if we had adopted the resolution on that, and we did our research and found out that we had not. So we'll adopt or you'll consider this tonight. If you adopt it, it will be part of the federal current management training systems. And then the practices of NIMS when we go into an incident will be implemented as well. So we're recommending approval.
This is required to be able to receive funding.
Correct. Receive federal emergency funding as well.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you. And then the last act legislative item for this evening is consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one, which is declaring certain properties surplus. And so Chief Ben or Scott, I'll let you guys talk about that for a second.
Yeah, we have a a couple of line units in the event that one of our these cars gets involved in an accident or pushed down mechanically. That the the officers have spare cars to drive. We've had this vehicle for several years. It's out of warranty. It's starting to develop some issues. This is a unique year in that we were able to purchase one of our couple of the trucks that would have gone back to the dealer because we we were able to get them at such a great residual price. And by selling this vehicle, putting the money back into the the budget, we're able it it's a good deal. Because we could sell this truck for a good portion of what we bought the new ones for to replace the as line cars for the for the apartment. So we so we.
Great. Scott, anything?
No, but it's a twenty fourteen Ford F- one fifty. The request is to utilize the KSL dot com cars section to take bids. Bids being approved by the city manager. The winning bench.
And then a consent will prove our consent calendar, which is the the minutes from September sixth. Okay. Under staff reports are the first item that we're going to discuss this evening or today is we're gonna have a presentation from our our Public Works Director, Matt Ship. This will be about the Wasatch Front Regional Council project selection process that we are required to submit by October third. So now I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Eric. Sorry. Okay, so merit council, every year Wasatch Front Regional Council comes out with a a invite for municipalities, I mean, various groups, U dot U T A, all of these groups to come in and submit projects for consideration for federal aid projects. We have received, and what we're doing tonight is presenting a couple of projects for your consideration as a city council. Because and I'll get into it a little bit more, but this is this is what it is, and I will just kind of go ahead and move forward. So as far as the process for selection of these projects, our concern with Wasatch Front, we received notification Tuesday on the sixth. And I actually got it around five o'clock at night that the information they were accepting notices, letters of intent. So and those letters of intent are actually due on the twenty ninth of September next week. So we have to come up with projects, and that just includes projects, cost estimates, and brief descriptions. It's a pretty straightforward pro- process. It's just a matter of picking a project of what we want to submit for a letter of intent. Once we've done that, Wasatch Front will go through and they'll grade and they'll put into categories these letters of these projects and decide what type of projects they are. And what they'll do is then they'll let us know. Let's go ahead and move forward with the formal application. And that formal application is when we get a little deeper into it, we get a little more detailed on the project, we put things together, and we submit it as a and then it goes through the process of the TAC Committee, the COG, and and it goes through all of these for approval. And once it's approved or not, they'll let us know in the spring of next year what projects have been selected. So this is the basic process. It's a pretty straightforward process. But in the details is when it really gets in there and and really the second round is the one that kind of puts the stress.
So in reality, we could submit as many letter intent projects as we wanted.
It depends on if you want to kill me, but yes, we realistically could. It depend if you it just depends on what you want and what the project is.
And then we would take feedback from W F R C to say, hey, we probably think these have have a little bit better.
They'll they'll say they'll say what they'll do is they'll say, look, we didn't get a lot of C Mac projects, congestion and mitigation projects, if you will. They'll say, let's look at this one, or what are your top two you want to even consider? They'll kind of throw it at us. So we can submit as many as we want. It's just a matter of paring it down. They'll help us pare it down. They certainly will. But at the end, they'll they'll turn to us and say, let's this is your better options right here.
They'll do that.
And we we've done that in the past with them, and we've done fairly well. Cottonwood Heights has come out. Every it seemed like we'd get something each year. So last year, we ended up with the the Hawk Signal and gosh, you can't even think of it right now.
Was it the Bengal to Highland?
That one was combined. That was the previous one. I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank, but we ended up with two of them. So this is where we are. I apologize. I can't remember.
Do they try to give every city at least?
No, no. Based on merit, they go through a pretty rigorous judging process. They don't. There's I I don't have the exact numbers. I'm sorry. I wish I'd brought them in. But there's only like in the C Mac, there's only five million dollars. I say only, but to split among all of the Salt Lake Valley cities. And when you think our roundabout was a C Mac project, and it was two point three million dollars, you know, we ate up half of it in that type. So no, it doesn't. It doesn't always happen that way.
How many categories are there?
There we're putting in for there are four categories that we're looking at.
So, yeah, so I'm a little confused because the top four categories, S T P, C Mac, TAP, and C R P. But then there's the tip program. So is the timing that you just mentioned submitting LOIs by October first, is that strictly for the first four and then TIPS is treated? So there's actually five then?
Yeah, we're we the categories, okay, the categories are what you put the project in. It's we submit the letters for all the projects we want. And we kind of work with Wasatch and submit it into the categories of where they are.
So so.
So we gives us better options for getting funding.
So as the mayor said, then we could submit, like we could submit two surface transportation projects. We could submit to C Mac, one TAP, one C R P, no tip. I mean.
Correct. Yes, you are correct.
Do we have the criteria that they use to vet out these projects?
Yes.
Scoring model, probably.
So we can pre pre-qualify kind of to give us.
That gives us a better idea of what we pigeonhole it in, if you will. But we've done that a couple of times. And historically, Wasatch Front is very good about looking at it and saying, like I said, they'll say, we don't have many in this. Can we work making this, let's just say, for example, an S T P to a C Mac project? Would you be willing to do that? And then we'll kind of decide.
Will they negotiate a little?
They they at the end of this process, yeah, then we kind of work our way around into the process.
That takes a while after submission.
Yes, yeah, they'll they'll let us know, and I don't remember the exact time, but then they'll send out and say, okay, based on this, December eighth was time for the formal applications. This is to let them know that we're going for all of these or whatever we're going for and help gear them up. They can look at the funding. It's a preliminary. You're right. It's a preliminary look at it. They can kind of. You know, if everybody's got twelve C Mac projects at ten million dollars each, obviously, that's not going to work. They'll they'll start pairing it down in the preliminary.
Is it? Is it equitable to everyone that puts it in, or is there some that have a little more pull with the good response?
I think I think Wasatch has done a good job. Like I said, they have a as best you can do a qualitative analysis. I mean, they they.
And justify the reasons.
Yes.
Thank you.
So is it still on the table then to put forward ideas other than the five that you have presented here?
Yeah, and that is that is up to you and the council and mayor, how y'all want to do that. What we're presenting tonight are five projects that we a couple of them we've actually put on there before. We did fairly decent in the last round, so we thought let's try it again and see if we can take it over the top. And these are projects that have been discussed in the past of helping make some improvements. So these are the five that we've looked at and thought we would bring it forward and go from there. So this is to answer one of the questions. These are the these are four of the categories that we're looking at service transportation, C Mac, the tap, and then the carbon reduction. Now, the carbon reduction and the C Mac are kind of similar type of funding. The difference here, the big difference is the year, the C Mac money is the twenty twenty-nine. The next round on carbon reduction is the twenty twenty-five. Just to give you, this is just background for those of you who haven't really worked with federal aid projects, so you know what we run into. We are, we have to do an environmental study for any of them that are approved. That is money out of the city's pocket. It is not part of the federal aid money. We have to do preliminary engineering, which is anywhere from twenty to thirty percent of the engineering design, is not part of the federal aid project, comes out of the city pocket. We also, the project cost would include the actual construction, design, construction, engineering, U dot contingency, and then land acquisition if it's needed. That's caught project cost. And at the end, after the preliminary and the environmental, we as a city would pay six point seven seven percent of the actual cost. That's what when you refer to as matches, that's our match.
So what would be the range of the outlay of costs on the least expensive project to like putting in the roundabout that turned out to be three million? I mean, is it? Like, I'm just trying to get a sense of what the city.
Six percent of the total. So if it's three million dollars, that would be.
Well, my understanding is that that we're on the hook to pay the environmental study and the preliminary, but not to exceed roughly seven percent of the overall cost.
No, no, that we're on the hook. That no federal money, the the project cost does not include the preliminary and the environmental.
So that's the question.
One hundred percent on the.
Yeah, I'm not asking the six point seven seven. I'm asking, you know, generally to do an environmental study and do do these things that are the cost to the city, whether we get the.
They will put that into the match total then later.
No. So so are we talking tens of thousands? Are we talking hundreds of thousands?
Down here at Bangal and Highland, the preliminary and the environmental, we have ninety to a hundred thousand dollars budgeted.
Yeah, that that, thank you. That's the flavor I was looking for. Thank you.
Roundabout similar ninety to a hundred thousand dollars for that. And then the two point three million dollars and the six point seven seven percent match do that. That's. So just so you're aware, when we go through this, here are a couple of projects. I'm gonna briefly go through them, and then we can discuss them, and then we can toss out, because I know we have time, but we can I'll briefly kind of introduce them. We can discuss and then others you'd like to talk about. One of the projects we put in a couple of times, and it's done. It's done pretty well. And also following the environment that I'm sensing on road calming, traffic calming, and safety and intersections of pedestrians, we're proposing the roundabout at Bangal and thirty-five hundred east. As you can see, this is now every picture you see here is not a design. It is just a drawing to give a concept. Okay? I don't want public to walk away with the information that this is what we are actually doing. But this is a concept of, and you can see, traffic calming ideas, necking the road down islands, the roundabout, improved pedestrian crossings. So that's this is one of the proposals as we talk about it. One of the challenges here on this this project are these two homes right here, accessing these two homes. This island really messes that up, as you can tell. So it's something that we need to consider if we want to look at doing a roundabout at Bangal.
Since this is my district, I do have some questions. I feel that I would need to have data that would support putting a roundabout in there. I've never experienced the roundabout with even having more than one car, two cars at any part of that intersection. So I don't see it either as as helping to lessen pollution by keeping cars in movement because, again, they're not stacking up and idling, sitting and idling. Because they come to a stop, it makes it a safe area. So I think of roundabouts as to demarcate and entrance to a neighborhood and get the cars to slow down. The cars are already relatively slow moving in this area. And I'm also not aware that there's a lot of traffic that there's going to be reduction. So I strongly would rather see for District Four a number of other things before I would want that to to be put forward. Does anybody on council see that differently?
Also, it touches District Two, and I would disagree with just about most of what you just said. I do go there because we do shop there, and I head up that direction quite often. There are times when there's multiple cars there. And the the design issue, those are easily, I think, addressed with 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 the homes there, but that's just a matter of getting counts and putting them in there. This is an area that has a quite a an abundance of what shall we say them? Rolling stops.
But 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 you've accomplished the goal of safety.
And I will maintain that encouraging people to ignore stop signs is bad public policy. And so putting a situation where compliance is the default rather than an exception makes it work well.
Was this one of the ones you said was submitted in a previous?
We've done this, I think, maybe three years ago, and it did okay. It was it wasn't submitted as a C Mac. It was submitted as an improvement or road improvement. And yeah, the C Mac, although there is savings, it's not the significant amount you would expect, say, for this roundabout. It's not near this. But to answer the question, it's we do, we anecdotally, we get calls all the time, especially from homes along here about the speeding and non-stopping. I don't have hard numbers. I'm not going to say I have them right in front of me because we don't. We don't collect data on almost.
Well, I I will give you some feedback since I I've talked extensively with my constituents who particularly live along thirty-five hundred east. And they will tell me that where people speed is down here. And they speed and make a lot of noise. And I would be far more in favor of ball bouts allow for residents that live in here to be able to get across the road, to be able to enter this supermarket area without having to come all the way up here. All these people would be able to easily get across the road if we did some ball bouts down here with safe crossings. That would also slow the traffic down because where they speed, again, unless you could show me data that is different than this, they're not speeding here because they've just come up a steep hill and they're coming to a stop. They're not. I'm not aware of any speeding there or here. Where there is speeding is here. And and I would like to see a design that slows the traffic down in this area. One of the reasons why I'm opposing this project is because we're in dire need of safe crossings across our arterials and collectors in conjunction with following what our general survey has brought out, which is that residents want connectivity, they want traffic calming, and they they want to be able to ride their bicycle. And that is going to require that we this city spends some money on things like ball bouts, on road narrow rings, and pinching where we where we have excessive traffic speeds.
I would suggest we move on. I I would again disagree with a good chunk of those statements, just actually haven't observed that.
Let's go to the next one.
Okay. The next one, this is between Union Park and thirteen hundred east. This is it's it. We're naming it a cycle track. It's a trail. This is part of the sorry, I need to figure out.
Did you mean to say Fort Union Boulevard?
Yeah, between Union Park and thirteen hundred.
Yeah, between Sage Sage Brushway and Pippen Drive?
No, no.
That's that's.
That's not what's on the screen.
No, I'm I'm sorry. I may not be.
Also, they're not in order.
Yeah, I may not be the same. So this is between Union Park and thirteen hundred east. This piece of road or is part of the Mid Valley Transportation Plan, and it's something it's this Mid Valley Plan actually goes. It it stretches all of Fort Union, but we're looking at starting somewhere. And so that's what this is. And to kind of give you an idea of what this project would entail, if if you chose to move forward with it, it's a protected track. It's a ten-foot multi-use trail on the north and the south side. It is great separated from the road, so it is delineated very well, and it has some intersection improvements in there as well. So this is another project.
With the Mid Valley active transportation aspect, lend to a higher percentage of getting the.
I think it would because that that plan was funded through W F R C as well. So this would be implementation of something they funded at a planning level or usually like that.
I love this one.
And like we said, it's a start somewhere. It's it. Obviously, we'd like to have a lot to do this with, but it does.
Yeah. And if I may point out to the council, one of the things that we hope to, we have funding, as I understand it, from our city manager. I'm just trying to get oriented. Where's the target? The target is.
No, it's not in this picture. Targets.
Yeah, part of the right southeast.
It's over here?
Yes. The Mavericks right there on water on thirteen hundred.
Because we're trying to help the the folks who live in in Cottonwood Heights be able to come down into where the Target and Home Depot are. And this is so impassable by bicycle that I would agree with the mayor. I'm I'm highly in favor of this.
I even like farther to the east, of course, you know, like you say, this is a start because we don't want people to go to.
Busy stretch to be separated from the road.
I think and one of those, one of the nice things about this one is it's so wide in this section. We have right of way, and we can that's we can do a lot within what we have versus trying to go outside.
Yeah.
That's why we chose this one. Is that okay?
Yeah.
The next one is, this is our, okay, let me clarify this, those who are listening at home. This is the city's Wasatch Boulevard. This is not S R two ten. This is the look at if you, I always called it the Lakai Cut Off, but
Yeah.
This was proposed two years ago, if I recall. Once again, it did. This was proposed two years ago, if I recall. Once again, it did fairly well. Um, the general concept of this one is adding shoulders and bike lanes. Along Wasatch, that was one, that was uh if I if five years ago, we actually went in and restripped. And put um some bike lanes in. They aren't protected. But there's some lanes there. We had to build a small shoulder to help it out. So we're proposing right now, I know where my mouse went. There it is. So we're proposing. Uh sidewalks up through this location in here. Because as things develop, they'll be required to come in and build the sidewalks, but we are looking at. Widening asphalt for shoulder and trail, not lanes. This is not adding any capacity to the road.
Two like two lanes.
There's three lane road up in here.
Isn't it divided with one lane in each direction?
I believe. Isn't there a left turn lane in there?
There's three, there's three lanes down through here and if I recall.
I I think it's, I think it's one lane in each direction.
There's just, there's.
Um, but we have, we have addition.
There is left turn lane in that on that road, at least according to the picture.
Well, well, when you get down here, it's to get, it's to get into here. There could, there's suddenly three lanes in here.
No.
But I'm pretty sure through here, it's.
Can we enlarge the center lane right there? This is the most recent satellite photo.
Um, I don't know how to blow this. This is.
One lane, two lane, and then a center turn.
What are these houses?
That's Duvernay.
But if we're talking about up here, it's what we're talking about.
Where he's got marked in red is all the way down.
No, no, Ju- Duvernay is here. This is Duvernay here.
Yeah.
Let me show them that.
Exactly.
So what I'm saying is I don't think I thought.
That's that's.
It's so educate me if you wouldn't.
Hang on, sorry. We're making a shift.
Why would we uh install the sidewalk when that would be left to a developer to do that?
We have sections of sidewalk that are missing and so we're proposing adding this. They're on the on the west side. Um, you can see that where there is no sidewalk, but there's sections where sidewalk exists.
My constituents is is needing sidewalks.
And that's the proposal.
And then it goes, but then we have it going down.
Yes, and there's sidewalk not in there and then. And then getting down, this is the tree farm and this is where we'd be ending the sidewalk. Here, but we would still be adding shoulder and lane capa- I mean. Shoulder and uh bicycle trail capacity on the east side.
Pedestrian, basically.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not in favor of a wider road there.
It's not a widening the road.
He's just said it. He's gonna widen the road.
Widen the asphalt. For bike lane. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's not adding a lane. It's adding a bike lane. So, yes, I guess.
Well, I'd have to see the precise plans. I'm generally not in favor of widening. That's not the answer to. We need to slow speeds down, not widen roads.
Oh, I'm not widening roads to.
It's the bicycle. You want a safe place for bicycle. I think that's what you're.
That's what we're, this is a bicycle and a pedestrian.
So that's a good.
I I have to see a precise because I ride my bicycle there all the time. And I don't think it's a matter of more asphalting. I think it's a matter of.
Safe.
Making, it's a matter of making our roads safer and that's not widening them. Okay.
So let's move on. Yep, let's go to the next one.
That's that one. This one is. Um, also a uh, this is a trail project. If you recall, the one we just mentioned earlier. Where we're starting the Highland and uh Bengal Boulevard project. That's in yellow, as you can see right here. We're now proposing this one that we take where the trail, we have funding to this point on the yellow. We're proposing taking the trail, this red that you see here. And taking that the rest of the way down to Fort Union Boulevard uh and putting in a multi-use trail, ten foot. Once again, we have a lot of the property along the way and we can work within. A lot of this within existing sidewalks. We would take those out and make. A ten foot trail as opposed to a five, four foot sidewalk and kind of make it, it's it's a bigger, bigger.
Yellow proposed to be protected as well?
The yellow would be protected, yes.
So you'd be continuing.
Yeah.
Does that go? That goes all the way up to the high school?
Yeah, this will go all the way up to the high school. Yes, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm pointing the wrong way. Yeah.
Well, depends on which way you're pointing.
Yes.
Outside in real life or on the map.
Right, so that is another proposal. It's a. Bringing to life some of our transportation uh bicycle plans as well as connectivity between. Trails and also pedestrian safety, students walking along and getting to and fro.
I was gonna mention that. I watched students walk in on that side of the road. It doesn't look that safe, so.
On the side of the island?
Yeah, so I really like that.
There's a neighborhood bypass while that can be can be utilized right away that comes here and comes on Camino Way. And brings you up uh to twenty seven hundred east. And it would be a way for both cyclists and pedestrians to avoid this whole area.
So this would be east offset of the road.
Yes, correct.
From the gutter.
Correct.
Yeah, I like this one too. Okay.
Does that one rate well, Matt?
I don't know. That that one's gonna be.
The regional road, right?
Yeah, so it, this would be the the uh. Surface transportations, the alternative transportations.
But where we received that other one.
Yeah, that would, yeah, this once again, we we've got money for this. This may help us out in five years, tie it. Yeah, tie it in Fort Union. One of the hardest things on this road is getting pedestrian and people down to that area. And and then we have, we're looking at plans to get further under two fifteen, but that's in the future. Um, that was that project and this one, we did this one, if you recall, last year. This one scored very well. So we're proposing it again. This is uh up. Up high uh Fort Union above thirtieth. Um, if you'll recall, we're proposing now, remember, these are just lines on paper right now. Putting in a uh. Multi-use trail here, um, bike lane and then uh. Not adding any lane capacity, no lanes added. But there is gonna be some uh curving gutter on the uh north side. Oh, sorry. Yeah, curving gutter on the north side. Um, the trail would be on top of that and then improving the sidewalks along the south side. And then this would tie into the existing Big Cottonwood Trail or the parking lot. That's that we've talked about and then taking it down as far as we can to the existing sidewalk. Yes, correct. And then taking that down to the existing sidewalk, which is. Right in there on Sage Sage Brush uh Way.
Thirty something, thirty two or.
Yeah, it's that neck of the woods.
There's a lot of room there, isn't there?
Oh, there's a lot of room on that turn right there. There's some, there is some challenges with the way it is because of two of the homes in there. But once again, there are challenges. We certainly could overcome them.
So you said curving guttering the north side and then the bike lane.
Bike lane on top of that.
On top of the.
The trail over there on the north side and improving the sidewalk on the south. And making that. Basically tying, you can see the red is the uh, the red dashed is the existing Big Cottonwood Trail. And this would tie that in and at some point it goes up to the Bonneville to the uh, to the east. And just bringing connectivity to each one of these. So that's another, like I said, this one, and it's also an opera, it's a, it's improving the road. Condition also. We're, we're putting that in as a transportation pro plan. Uh, this road is in bad need in this area of reconstruction and we're kind of hoping we can pull something off.
No, I, well, again, this is um part of my history.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I say before you, I'm sorry, council member, um, and I forgot to mention also uh pedestrian crossings. We're looking at. Couple of those along here. And if you remember, one of the discussions we had, I don't mean to interrupt you. I want to cover this before. But one of the discussions we had was the hawk signal down in here.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
At the top of the road?
Yeah, right up here at Big Cottonwood. Yeah, where's the road? Yeah, oh, sorry. Right here at the parking lot.
Yeah.
And then uh we're looking at proposing at, you know, crossings at a couple of these major crossings, get people on the other side of the trail back and forth. If they wanna get to the trail from the neighborhood, so.
Well, I want to thank, no, no, and I want to thank our public works director because you beat me to the punch. Uh, exactly what you just said is what I want to emphasize in all these conversations about improving mobility in Cottonwood Heights. As wonderful as it is to uh build these uh various paths and and uh protected bike lanes. Uh, they're only gonna be as good as they also get people across our arterials and collectors. So I really want to thank you for having that in mind to consider how the residents who might want to use that path. Are gonna get there on Nut Tree or what whatever, you know, streets along here. Because if there's one thing we know about pedestrians and cyclists, they're willing to walk and ride their bike. But they're not willing to go a quarter mile out of their way to be able to safely cross and legally cross. A road, whether it's a collector arterial. And the only reason I'm being so vocal on this subject is. That as we work toward the kind of connectivity that we want for our city, we really need to keep in mind safe crossings. How do these pedestrians and cyclists get across our collectors and our arterials? And that can often cost a lot of money to put in hawk lights and things that are really meaningful.
You, you need to remember that we have to be extremely judicious. When it comes to putting a mid-block crossing on a highway with that's four or five. Lanes, whatever happens to be. Um, you can't just stick them in there every place that you may want because it. You you, ox are great, but there's too many of them and they then they become ignored, so. It it's it's judicious if it's uh, you know, it, that that that's my, would be my comment is uh mid-block crossings. Can be useful, but you have to be really, really cautious on that.
That's it.
The one at Bella Vista and. Across Fort Union that the kids use, um, because the school has been there a long time, you know, but putting one. At the next road down or up would probably.
And I think that's a discussion that we could get to.
Yeah, you need, you just need to be really, really careful when you know. When you're doing that.
So the the question is, obviously, we need to prioritize if there's other projects you're interested in. Um, we want to narrow it down or prioritize if there's others that you want to add and we need to know as. Your direction.
Is there any negative impact of submitting too many now?
I don't know for sure what.
We don't want to make you miserable, but if we have a couple more that we want.
No, I don't know. I mean, I would. Out of these five, is there maybe two you like and to add a couple more if you want to look at a couple more or? But we'll, we'll submit whatever you ask us to submit. Actually, Mary, you have to sign the paper.
Thank you. Yeah, there were two of them that I thought would. Would be good for right now and go because I I'd hate to lose this by going too much at them. But there are a couple. You already know the one that I'll be interested in adding, but not at this time. I I really get. Have a select at least two of these as priority.
Well, there's the roundabout. I'll just, can I just bounce through this real quick and get a nod or a no nod or?
This is probably a hold for now.
The roundabout?
I should just say, we're not, I don't think we have a consensus yet on this.
Okay.
Well, I, I, that that one easily, um, uh, that one makes a lot of sense. Uh, anywhere there's a forward stop, especially where one that's being ignored. On the regular is a good place for roundabout. So, um, and I think that that also has some attractiveness because it's different than all the others.
Yeah.
It could go into a different pot where most of the the bike trails are, that's a lot of the same.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. This one, I think, is a hundred percent consensus, man. That's the best one. Yeah.
This one, this one's, this one's really, it would be really expensive.
I don't know.
Yeah, the. And just, I just may say on this one, we'll have to look at the boundaries, but there may be some potential of some of that old tax income financing. From that project there going as a match towards.
And I just need to give a little kudos to Andy, who's Holka. He worked with them on this and he's kind of one of the.
Right, that is right here, that area. So that's a good point.
Okay, so, yay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, this is Wasatch Boulevard, the city's Wasatch, the cutoff at Lakai.
There were other ones that were more origin than this.
Yeah, I think Ellen would like.
Well, well, I I would, I would just like to see the sidewalks to make sure that we are coming through here. Because the residents, the residents in this area want to walk and they want to have connectivity into Danish uh world. So I I just question, I just question whether this this uh is, this is, I can't really support this design.
Yeah, so let's kind of pass on this, I think, for now.
Um, this is the Highland Drive uh connecting Fort Union to Bengal with a trail.
This is another connection, probably the next. That those two are the connecting.
And this one is the uh, the Fort Union above thirtieth.
I also like this one too. Yeah, so I think these, the three would have, I think, a hundred percent consensus.
Doesn't really matter if they're in our district or not. This is where I grew up my whole life and that's always been a problem there.
Can you add uh? Can you add the those crossings to your diagram because?
We'll add that in ten. We'll, we'll put it in the letter.
It haves.
Yeah, remember, these are, yes, lines on paper, literally. We can, once we get funded, we can.
Some attractiveness because there isn't another trail that goes almost goes to exact same places.
We're only going a hundred yards north of three hundred east.
Yeah.
I know.
So.
I'm open.
I think we need to discuss that a little more, Scott, with everybody. So that's what I'm, the uh.
I'm sorry, I missed.
I I I like the the two trail projects that are connected. Otherwise, this one.
That goes in.
Sorry. This one. Is a little bit less attractive simply because it, there is a trail, a hundred, two hundred yards north of it. It already goes from almost the exact same spot, but it goes down.
Isn't that over the hill and down?
It's it's down big cop. It is, but it as as far as a bypasser, it is, it's off, it's off the road. I mean, if I'm looking, doing an evaluation, that's why would I put in a second parallel trail when I've got other places that may need one? That's.
But you're saying to help eliminate so that we can get to the possible roundabout? That's what.
Well, uh, again, the the roundabout is 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 a, is a really good idea. It accomplishes the traffic calming. Um, and uh, you know, it, that's, that's the exact kind of place that a roundabout actually works really, really well. About the only thing better you'd see is where you're taking. Bikes.
So I, the issue with that, Scott, is I haven't really had heard any of that before today. And so I think.
Heard any of.
The roundabout at that location is the first I've heard about it. So, so to me, um. If they've got concerns, you know, it's, if they've got concerns up there, I think we need to spend more time.
And can, and may I get a point of clear divorce director? Uh, when I talk about the needed traffic calming in places like thirty five hundred east. Uh Danish Road and others where we need, what I understand to be relatively expensive, either chicanes or ball bouts. Uh crossings that uh again would slow the traffic down. Do those kind of items fall within these kind of requests or am I barking up the wrong tree?
They don't fall within this type of request.
Okay, because I needed that clarification.
Be, if you're just talking, it, one, it needs to be on a, to score well. You need to be on a road with high volumes, somewhat connectivity, like Highland connects Sandy to here and. Fort Union and all of that. Um, a higher connectivity. Um, it needs to be on the, it has to be a project on the uh, the. Gosh. The the R T P, the regional plan. Um. And so there's things that has to qualify for individual smaller projects like neighborhood projects, when you're talking about some of the traffic calling you're mentioning. Those are really, they would, no, they they wouldn't take those unless, like I said, the neighborhood was. For instance, Fort Union down on the east end of Fort Union where those homes. I mean, it's not a neighborhood, but it goes through. So that's, that's the difference.
So it's really more focused on collectors and arterials.
It really is in areas where you have the higher.
W F R C is dealing with, just for example, uh, I mean, another place that has been mentioned for taking out the stop signs and putting in a roundabout is like seventeenth east and seventy two hundred south. That's, that's kind of collectors for the neighborhood. That's, that's kind of collectors for the neighborhood, doesn't kind of extend past that Bengal, on the other hand, is. One of the few east-west connectors we have in the city that actually goes straight. Um, and so that's one of the reasons why that, why that would work. The other advantage of doing that is that actually is less work for. Matt and his people because they've already submitted it.
Yeah, so to me, putting a roundabout there probably needs some citizen, um. Comments, so, so rather than, if, if we submit something now, uh, and, and get it approved. To me, that's after the fact, I mean, if, if I think we need to involve citizen comment and opinion.
I mean, and, and let me just go on record, if money was limitless. I would love to have a roundabout there so that people could feel better about themselves when they don't come to a full stop. I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have lied to that, but, uh. But money is limited, and that's why, again, we look at the survey that we just got last month and that it's been clear. Traffic calming, slower speeds, connectivity, which for me, that particular intersection, uh.
Every single one of those.
I respectfully disagree.
Absolutely gets every single one of them.
So I have three, Fort Union upper, Fort Union on the east end, and then the Highland. Those are the three that I've got to.
But by Thursday, you have to make.
By Thursday, I'll have these three ready to go, and if there's more you want to discuss, Merritt, you just have to tell me if you want to.
We'll have more discussions.
There you go.
So, thank you, Matt, appreciate, appreciate that. So we're going to move on to the, to the general plan discussion, which is item B under staff reports, and we'll have our community economic development director, Mike Jones, to lead us through real quick.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we discussed this, let's see. Briefly, at the last council, of an approach that, that we wanted to bring to the council, um, before we dive into the neighborhood town hall meetings. Uh, that we have discussed previously, so I'm going to run through this quick, um. And a lot of this is just going through what, what we have. In place today, and then, you know, the direction that we would recommend going. And I think the approach here is getting the council's feedback on this, we would then prepare. A, a draft land use element of a general plan, we'd have a whole plan. To then take forward to the public for town hall input and public input and open houses and things like that. So I'm going to run through some background, I'm going to go pretty quickly, I'm not going to read all of this, but I'm happy to send this presentation out after the fact, this was also in your packet as well. These are the existing land use categories in, in today's general plan, and in the new general plan, we would not recommend really changing this. Um, and then underneath the land use category is the corresponding zones we have in the city, so as you're aware. In a general plan, you develop a long-range land use vision for, um, how you envision the city being developed out over time and the type. What types of uses go where, they're usually a little more broad in terms of land use categories, and then within each land use category, you have a specific kind of zone. Um, so that's what's shown here, we have, um, you know, not a lot, some cities have dozens and dozens and dozens of different kind of zonings. And you see, I, this is fairly popular right now, when they go through this general plan process, they. Care down the number of zones they have, they simplify, we're in a pretty good spot with that, we don't have a ton of different kinds of zones. We have our commercial land use category, one corresponding zone, which is regional commercial. That's most of your, um, you know, uh, your, your major commercial nodes along Fort Union. Um, Highland Drive, those areas, those intense commercial areas. And we have neighborhood, commercial and residential office, which are intended to be yours, um, slightly smaller scale. Commercial developments where you have direct adjacency, um, to residential areas. Mixed use, uh, this, this is a big one, we'll talk a lot about this, but we do have a land use category for mixed use. Um, and then as, as an aside update, we are proceeding with a text amendment to the mixed use ordinance regarding. Um, vertical integration of different types of uses, so that will move forward separate of this, but mixed use is a land use category, one we focus on a lot. We have our office designation, uh, which corresponds to our big office parks in the city, mainly the Cottonwood Corporate and Old Mill Centers and then. Um, the Union Park Center. And then civic, uh, civic is your public facility type zone, so parks, um, you know, different city facilities or utility stations, things like that. Um, a- anything that's there for a public use has a civic type of land use library and sequencer as well. And then religious institutions is mentioned in the general plan, but generally those are allowed within residential zones, so there's not a corresponding zoning. They're just, um, allowed in single-family zones today. And then we get into the different residential categories, we have rural or agricultural, this is your very low density. That correspond to your zones with the largest minimum lot size, half an acre and up. We have low density, uh, which corresponds to most of how the city is currently zoned, your R-one zone, so. Eight, ten, and fifteen there, R-one eight, R-one ten, R-one fifteen corresponds to minimum lot sizes, but that's your typical, single-family neighborhoods. Uh, then we have medium and high density in the residential land use categories. Uh, medium density is six to ten units per acre, and then residential high density is, is eleven, does eleven to twenty-four, but really it's eleven and up. Uh, then we have, uh, open spaces, um, you know, these, these kind of, there's some redundancy here, but. But your open spaces would be your city parks, those are always own public facility. Sensitive lands areas, we've got our foothill residential zones that are really unique to, um, the foothills of Wasatch Boulevard. And, and that's it, so, so those are the existing land use categories, the existing zoning types, and again, we're not proposing to change a lot of that. This is the, this is what the land use map looks like, you can see there, the tan and the yellow are all residential designations. Um, a lot of our commercial areas today, we are recommending that as a future land use mixed use because it does provide flexibility. Um, and, and a lot of what we'll recommend are how do we, how do we better define that mixed use depending on where you are in the city? So you can see here, the city is largely residential, the land use pattern is very residential, that's how we've been built out, we have, um, core areas. And, and we're not proposing to change that a whole lot. This is today's current zoning, you can see the colors are different, but the pattern, uh, if I flip back and forth a few times, the pattern is largely the same. So today's zoning does, um, pretty closely match what the land use designation is. As we prepare this general plan update, a few of the, the key resources we're using in regard to the land use element in particular are here. The city's general plan and some of the recommendations it has in there, especially for, um. Uh, developing a town center, a, 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 a public area in the, the Fort Union twenty-three hundred east area. We've got the Fort Union Corridor area plan and, and that, um, that gets into what we're going to be talking about here is. How do we, um, establish a vision for Fort Union that takes into, um. Consideration, not everywhere along Fort Union is the same, and maybe, uh, commercial development in. One area of the corridor should be different, um, than, than it is in another area of the corridor based on the surrounding context. And then we have the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan, which, which really recommends, um, the gravel pit as a redevelopment site. And the rest of the Wasatch Boulevard corridor as, as, um, not recommended for any. Commercial type of land use in the future and, and instead, um, being recommended as a, a kind of a recreational corridor. So that being said, this will lead into kind of where we're going, this is, this is actually in the Fort Union Corridor, um, uh, the Fort Union Master Plan right now. And this shows how we would, um. Divide up the different areas along Fort Union, you've got the orange area, the blue and the green there, I'm just looking at.
So is this current or?
This is in the Fort Union Plan today.
This is current.
Yeah, this is not in today's general plan, but it is in the. And, and why this is important, there are pages and pages in the Fort Union Plan that talk about what this means. But, but what I want to take away from this is you can see the three different areas, the orange being the, what's called the commercial district. That's your intense development area down by, um, Target and Home Depot and Trader Joe's in that area where there's. Uh, a lot of infrastructure, a lot of capacity, a lot of, again, high traffic development. And then as you go east, it kind of tapers off, so you have your community district in the middle, which caps at. Island Drive, and then moving east, the, the twenty-three hundred east and Fort Union intersection, and then the whole corridor. East of there becomes what we've called the Canyon, uh, District, which, um, is a little more residential, a little more sensitive in nature. So with that being said, I know this is very quick, but, um, this is, uh, an idea of a future land use concept. This was one of the concepts that was shown previously at the, uh, open house we had, I believe, back in March. Um, a- and this really is, um, i- in a lot of ways, a, a manifestation of what's in that Fort Union Plan. Where, um, the areas targeted for growth of redevelopment are, are no different than what's in the, the current plans, we've got the civic town center area. At Fort Union and twenty-third, we've got, um, a few high-density, uh, or high-capacity areas being the, uh. The professional office park for, uh, Cottonwood Corporate and Old Mill Corporate, um, off of two fifteen. And then the, uh, thirteenth east and Fort Union area, those are, um, you know, those could, and, and long in the future, when, you know. When maybe they aren't as commercially viable anymore, that's certainly not the case right now, they're, they're thriving right now, so this, we're talking long range. But those areas could handle more intense development without creating, uh, disproportionate, uh, immediate negative impact. Uh, again, if done right, to adjacent residential areas. Uh, gravel pit is kind of in that same, same bucket, and then you have. You, your city center area, which we would treat differently because it is in the middle of a res- residential area. And then the green, um, little areas here would be identified as even smaller scale neighborhood style centers. So you have Canyon Center, you've got, um, the intersection down the road on Bengal where, uh, Rudy Cafe and Sumac in that area. As a very low-intensity kind of neighborhood market district, and then the, the Smith's Shopping Center in Fort Union. Um, so, so what we would recommend, a- and then you can see here the yellow, um, which is the rest of the city. Says targeted infill and redevelopment, um, what that means. Along the Fort Union Corridor is we have some mixed use opportunities there, and mixed use needs to be developed properly and, and within, uh, proper context. And then the rest of the city, you know, we're not looking at major redevelopment of residential areas, but as a. Tool to implement more affordable housing, at least one type of it. We, we are mandated by the state now to permit ADUs, and, and that is a valid tool, only one tool and only one way to do it, and. There are, there's other work we need to do here, but, uh, a, a valid way to, um. To move the needle a little bit on providing affordable housing within the city.
What are these, uh, flowers or stars or?
Those are, those are from a map from our consultant, and we took off a legend because they don't, they're, they're not relevant to what we're discussing, so. I, I couldn't erase them, but we're disregarding them for this conversation, because there will be brand-new maps made for all of this stuff. But, but basically, the direction we're recommending is this, um. If we were to draft a land use element of the general plan today, the land use pattern would look very similar to what it looks like right now. With mixed use being the predominant commercial redevelopment tool, only in these commercial areas, so the Fort Union Corridor. Um, the, the major commercial nodes, so, uh, thirteenth east Highland Drive, twenty-three hundred east, uh, the gravel pit. But then we would go a step further and, and along these lines. Quantify that, hey, mixed use doesn't look the same everywhere, and this is where the form-based, um, kind of code development would come into play. If we would make different recommendations for what redevelopment looks like, depending on where you are, especially along the Fort Union Corridor. So base, generally, as you go from west to east, it, it goes from, um, you know, higher. Uh, higher intensity or density of uses, and, and as you move eastward, that would taper off and, and be developed in a way that's contextual. To the surrounding areas. Once this is set, we would then go in and recalibrate the, the open space element of the general plan and the transportation element. Because it all plays off of each other, uh, but, but this would be the direction we'd recommend right now, and, and I think the purpose of. The discussion tonight is to just show the council, hey, these ideas are already in the Fort Union, uh, Master Plan. We are just recommending taking a step to, to implement them, define what this would actually look like. And, and I think this resolves some of the concerns we see in today's. Um, you know, when we get land use applications where mixed use at Canyon Center looks very different than mixed use on a, uh. You know, quarter acre property along the Fort Union Corridor, yet they're governed by the same code, and I think what we're acknowledging here is. We need to develop this in a different way, that's, that's more contextual and responsive to where you are in the city and, and what's in the surroundings. What we would do is develop a draft land use element, again, it would just be for. Uh, you know, to take forward to these, these public open houses, we can ask questions and the, the focus surveys that I know we're planning on doing. But that would be the direction, is it's, it's not really a lot different than what's in the, the master plans right now, we would just, um, define it better, qualify it a little better. And, and move forward under that direction.
If I may, uh. You know, again, one of the things that came out in the, uh, survey that we just took of our city residents. Was that many, uh, indicated that they were interested in small, uh, I think it was termed small shopping malls. Now, what exactly that means to any given person is a bit of a question mark, and what I'm interested in, when I think of walkability for our city. Uh, having, uh, neighborhood sheds where within a, a ten-minute walk of where you live. You could get to a little cafe or maybe a little boutique grocery store to get your milk and eggs and bread. And so when I, uh, look at the larger, um, go back a few slides, um, uh. You know, while, while, um, some of these areas such as, uh. You know, I, I'd be interested to find out in these upcoming town hall meetings, uh, what the appetite of our residents, uh, is. Uh, for looking for small, uh, little nodes that would be, uh, you know. There might be a land use opportunity, uh, or at least a designation, and that would be through form-based code. Uh, to have this ability of, uh, walkability to a small commercialized area. Uh, again, not, uh, not big commercial, but, uh, something that, uh, again, makes our city more walkable. Um, because there's obviously still large areas, uh, where they don't have a nearby, uh, grocery or. Uh, little cafe or, uh, bakery or any of that.
Yeah, I think that's great, um, that, that's exactly where, uh, a town hall meeting, a district-level town hall meeting can be beneficial is. Here's a plan, you know, where, where is it deficient, hey, do you want something closer to you, where would you put it? Would you be okay with the, the trade-offs of, hey, you know, some of that might be in a residential area and, and we have to.
In form-based code, you would be able to designate, we're not talking about.
But let's, I mean, a bodega. Half the size of a seven eleven. But I mean, it, it is what it is, and I, I think you, 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 you need to be realistic when you present that. Because the other thing that was very. Apparent from the, the thing was that a lot of people like. Um, single-family homes with large yards. Um, and.
I, I, I don't think that's, uh, flying in the face of walkability, connectivity and neighborhood sheds.
Especially the people who like that, don't, don't want.
Clarification, not only in the town hall meetings, but in our next topical survey, because I, I'm not seeing the correlation between those two.
This will be refined a little bit, because we do have like the, I, I call it the Pizza Hut Shopping Center, because it's the one on, on Highland Drive. There, there's some areas here that are commercial that aren't shown on the map, so we'll clean that up, but this is the direction we'll go with this.
For the twenty-thirties. Or do I have the wrong spot or is that?
That's labeled city center.
The city center?
Yeah.
Come up with different, city center.
Of course, yeah.
To me, a lot of people means. Yeah, city hall, that's where a lot of, so, uh, community area or. Just something other than that, unless you want to draw a line all the way up the hill to here.
No, understood.
Mike, one last question, we denied, uh, upzone on some property. In an area that was designated as a possible that they could put duplexes.
Yeah.
Uh, and musted a chagrin, I think, of the planning commission. But we saw the, the, uh, the outcry from those that want to remain. To let that remain single family, and part of it is, uh, we listen. And so I think we need to listen through this when we do this, and then have it somewhat portable too.
Yeah, the draft is a starting place, and you, you'll get in and change it, you know, a hundred different times, and, and we'll get input, and that'll, that'll, um, affect it all, but.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it, so don't go anywhere, we still have our, we next is our affordable housing report that I think. That we need to submit.
Yes.
October first, and then I'll let you get into that as well.
This was also distributed, I'm going to run through what's in it briefly, and I will just again clarify. Uh, affordable housing and housing in general will be an element of the general plan. So if, if there's concerns with the goals we're using or how we're trying to achieve, um, implementing affordable housing in Cottonwood Heights. We can change all that and revisit that with the general plan, this tonight is just a report that we're mandated to submit to the state by October first. Um, so I'm just going to share the, the tables here, and this came out a little fuzzy, so I apologize for that, but this just, I won't go through all of these, this. Report will be posted online, um, this is just from, um, from different data tables, uh, generated by the US Census Bureau. And then updated annually with, with different projections, showing the different, um, types of housing in the city at different affordable affordability bands. This one is in, uh, particular rental housing needs by income bracket and. This one is in uh particular rental housing needs by income bracket, and the one that I want to draw attention to here is that. Um less than thirty percent AMI, that's your your severely cost-constrained housing. You will see a pattern like this in probably every city in Utah where, you know, we have. According to the data, four hundred seventy five households whose median income qualifies them as being thirty percent or less. Than making the the area median income, which considered, which would consider them extremely cost-constrained. Uh yet we only have two hundred and ten rental units in the city available for those four hundred seventy five. Um renter households, meaning there's a gap, and and that gap is then, you know, th- this year it's three hundred eighteen, it's it is projected to go down, but.
So that actually surprised me, we have two hundred and ten units that are.
What is the actual?
It's it's about, I've got a chart, I think it's like seventy thousand.
That that helped me put some of this data into.
Depends on household size too, but.
So we have two hundred and ten that fit, thirty percent AMI model?
Occupied units, yeah, and that can be rental units can be a house that's being rented out, that can be an apartment, that can be, we don't know exactly what.
Qualify as, those could be.
But that's just um and and cost-constrained is where thirty percent of your hu- thirty percent of your AMI is devoted to housing. If you're over thirty percent of your annual income going to housing, you're considered cost-constrained. So that's what.
How many ADUs are actually reported?
Legal and licensed? I do know. Two have been licensed.
Out of what, couple hundred?
Probably, yeah.
That'd be data that.
Would they show up on here, the uh ADs that are not uh licensed, would they?
Uh that's a good question, I would need to to dig into these tables and where they're sourcing from. I it is from census, so if they, if the ADU occupants were covered by the census and 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 responded to it, then it would be in there. Um this is, let's see, this is just um just some housing numbers, uh projected growth of households. Um you can see we're actually, he and and this is where the state is imperfect, it's taking. You know, we're going from the federal level down to the regional, down to the local, and the closer you get in, the 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 less precise it gets, but um. You know, a a a. Projected decrease in um available housing units uh within the next five years, obviously, I don't think we're gonna lose. Fourteen hundred housing units, but um we, what the takeaway here is, we are not projecting uh massive growth here uh naturally.
Yeah, that seems.
When it says that we're gonna go uh down by fourteen hundred and four houses. Uh in the next five years, does that mean owner occupied, so that they are going into rentals?
I believe the total households is 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 families, so people occupying buildings. I I think this corresponds to what was in that recent census report where. Based on the age and and growth elsewhere in the county, our population is projected to slightly decline.
That still seems, I would expect stable if anything.
Yeah, and and that's like I said, that's where they're looking, they they go from like countywide, and if there's a lot of growth in say the southwest quadrant of the county.
They just take.
They take them somewhere. And and this was in the council um communications last week, but the population, the projection has declined population in Cottonwood Heights and Sandy. And Midvale and Murray, and you know, all the kind of these side communities, where they're all seeing this this trend in projections. Uh projected change in household size i- is actually gone um up slightly, but not much, it's pretty static. Um so size of households has has gone up slightly since twenty eighteen, but um is projected to remain about even. And then here's just some other data, uh I think the interesting one here, you see some projected um median monthly housing cost data on the top there. The projected median income is interesting, and that's shown on the bottom here, so and and the difference, I want to point out the difference between the owner occupied. Uh median income, which is right now uh roughly a hundred nine thousand dollars. Uh and the renter occupied income, which is sixty one thousand, so there's a big gap between median incomes of of owner occupied. Units and renter occupied units, and that brings the median generally to about ninety five thousand.
And the ninety five is the one that you're talking about. It's being used in those other.
Yeah, that's a high median income and you know.
So what percentage, so so when we talk about AMI, uh is the AMI then derived off the uh. Uh the combination of these numbers, uh that is uh the combination of owner occupied, so.
Kind of, it's it's a little more complicated, because it it does take into effect um factors like. How many people are in your house, how many uh earners live in your house, what's the size of your family? Meeting income for a family of six is gonna be different than than for uh someone that is living on their own.
But but right now, then would you say, when we talk about AMI, uh it not using the ninety five thousand?
Or citywide median income, yeah, i- it's it's that ninety five thousand is where I would want to. Uh but but you can see there, it differs between owner occupied and rented, it's only projected to go up, and I again, I think this is probably a common trend. Um we see everywhere in Utah right now.
I was just going back to the people that are the the two hundred and ten units that are occupied at thirty percent of. Thirty percent of. And thirty percent of their income, that comes out to seven hundred and fifteen dollars a month.
Yeah, thirty percent AMI, according to this would.
Inside somebody's home, right? Missing a room inside somebody's home.
Again, that's where what I said, yeah, an ADU could possibly fit that type of thing, but that's a. If you consider their actual, their actual income is probably on the others, the renter's side, the sixty one or whatever it is, that.
True, yeah.
That's still a, that's a, that's a big jump down.
And then this is just a quick update on the the various goals um that that we've identified previously, that again, we'll go over when we do the housing element of the new general plan. Um we've got a whole many to choose from, we've chosen three and then added one, because um ADUs is an allowable goal, and we have to allow those now, so we've included that. Um but one is allowing for residential uses within commercial zonings, our mixed use zoning does allow that, we're continuing to adjust that to. To make sure that lands in a good place. Uh implement zoning incentives for low to moderate income units on a long-term basis. Uh we view our our plan development district as helping achieve this, because it does require, it it mandates um. Developer-funded deed restricted affordable housing units, so we're seeing those um now entitled at the Walsh property and at the gravel pit. Total of sixty three deed restricted units will be built, the Walsh properties under construction right now. Um utilize a modern income housing set aside from community reinvestment agency. Uh redevelopment agency or community development and renewal agency, so any CRAs we create will require a ten percent set aside for affordable housing. And I did want to note, this is in our report, those old CDA funds, the Fort Union Project and the Corporate Center, we've earmarked uh. Think ten percent of each of those to be set aside for affordable housing.
And not necessarily in those.
And then obviously, uh having an ordinance that allows ADUs is another tool, we do have that ordinance. Um the uptake has been slow, but it's there and it's allowed. So that's what's in the report.
Great. Any other questions come in?
Uh GSBS Consulting.
Interesting to know what the impact the ADUs is having on affordability, because like you say, with the the project down here on. On uh Fort Unions and seventeen, I mean, we talk about affordability, twenty seven, twenty eight hundred dollars a month, that's not. We're talking about affordability and attainable, and when you see the renters, you know they're paying way more than. A lot of people are paying for their mortgages, so whatever they're earning, a lot more of it's going towards their.
Yeah, I, to your point, Councilman, I I agree, I think we have got a lot of work to do to really dig in and be more innovative. Come up with real incentives uh beyond what we currently offer to developers to come up with attainable housing within the designated places. We wanted, because my objection with ADUs is one of the solutions is uh that kind of dispersing uh adds more cars. Again, throughout our roads, uh what we know that lower income people need is good transit. And so we want to locate these uh lower uh income housing opportunities. Where where we know we're gonna be developing transit that and active transportation, walkable community where they're not gonna have to rely on. Owning a a car for every adult in the household.
One of the realities here of our communities, we're built out. And have an average cost of a home over seven hundred or some thousand dollars. And looking at the opportunities for those that cannot afford housing, we are in in a situation where we don't have a lot of opportunity. For that building now, um now we look at the term moderated amounts, and then we can start to look at how to mitigate some of these issues. Something there, but having, having built out the way that we are right now, and then also looking at our future plans, it's gonna be real difficult to help. True affordable housing in a manner, but it's gonna be affordable for us, here we're looking at their future. It would cause some serious disruption to some of the.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we impose on existing neighborhoods, I'm talking about the opportunities in the areas that our. Planning Director has pointed out to us, there's a, there's likely the Hillside Plaza area, there's the um. Other areas that we plan to uh, you know, we we could really incentivize lower parking lots, uh you know, pure parking stalls. Per housing unit, there's many things that can be done to incentivize uh along with deed restrictions and other.
My my point is, is that housing won't be able to be, because developers are gonna need return on investment, right? So, you know, between the rock and the hard place, you're in trying to come up with any.
Well, smaller, much smaller, and um I I I think it's gonna be interesting to to just see what we can do. Uh I I don't disagree that there has to be an ROI, so let's see what we can uh come up with.
Like people at Hillside have already already expressed a disinterest in.
Putting a lot of. They don't want them in their backyard.
No. Okay, I mean. And so. The the reality is, yeah, we we have a lot of, we're built out, we have a lot of, we have a lot of things, so.
Tell tell that to, tell that to our business community when they need workers.
So so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the last item under our staff reports today, which is uh our our council position. With a little Cottonwood Canyon environmental impact statement, let me just give a disclaimer as we get going on this. What we're doing here for a second, so uh we obviously all know the EIS that came out um in the last couple weeks. Uh that selected a. To begin an enhanced busing option, which is is what we kind of hoped for. Uh and and then uh with the considering that a tolling option, that they like to get going in within about a year. Uh in the canyons on on peak days, and uh which we also, I think, were in favor of. And then they they, their last item was that they they were, they've chosen Gondola B. Uh as as their uh option uh to through the end of the EIS, once they search for funding. So, you know, wh- what we are doing right now is our our council position was pretty clear about where we stood. And it was, it was what they determined they would do in the short term, but but it was actually the opposite of what we wanted in the long term. And 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 I'll tell you where I uh feel strongly that that they've, that uh and and why I'm highly disappointed. I- is the the Gondola Base Station. Um was, you know, in their original one was about fifteen hundred parking stalls, and and that for us was too much. Because that did not stop traffic through our our neighborhoods and through Wasatch to get to that Gondola Base Station. And and then and then instead, UDOT came back and it said, no, we're gonna make it twenty five hundred parking stalls, which to me was a kind of a slap in the face a little bit. So so what I'd like to do at this point is talk about, uh and I'll let Tim start, we we've got some slides. We're gonna look at what our existing statement says with some bullet points of things that we might want to add. And 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 making a stronger statement, and uh and we'll see if we can come to a consensus on on how we all feel. Uh without going about that.
Okay, so yeah, I'm gonna give the background of what our public input has been at this point, the the process and what what we provided input on. And then um towards the end, provide some recommendations of what we see as potential options, that's based on. The review of of the documents that have come out, some conversations with several of you as well, so. Um I'm gonna walk through this real quickly, and then I want to make sure there's plenty of time for conversation on that, you move to the next slide. So these were the previous actions, I don't need to go into this a whole lot, but we provided at every point in the process, we provided input. Um to UDOT, in it, these are the formal input points that we provided. We have also had many different meetings with them, re- reemphasizing what our points were. I I want to really focus on the third to the last bullet point, we provided a five-page, very detailed memo. Um at the last public input process, and uh it was sent to UDOT, in addition to that. We provided a follow-up letter requiring or requesting a collateral collaborative approach on the design elements. And then recently, the council this year provided another resolution that we submitted to them to uh request reduction of speeds. Down to thirty five miles an hour on Wasatch Boulevard, those are the formal processes that we've been through. What we've done in our previous positions, we consistently and strongly opposed um the Gondola alternative. I I want to be clear, for the public that's listening, we strongly oppose that in every aspect. We've been supportive of a phased uh bus priority option focused on local input, and I really want to emphasize this also for the public. We have huge concerns about neighborhood access on Wasatch Boulevard with the traffic issues. And the local impacts that that occur uh occurs, including mobility for all users. Roadway speed has been a consistent position that we've had concerns about and requested reductions. And also traffic congestion, neighborhood access, transit prioritized solutions is what we've advocated in our positions, move to the next slide. So summary of the previous input, this really goes into the details of that. We we talked about local access and corridor mobility as as a uh subcomponent of what our uh input has been. Stronger emphasis on safe neighborhood access, both those that are walking, um mobility elements. Especially on King's Hill Drive, any added capacity for flex lanes or transit-only lanes. We've requested updates on traffic data, making sure that the data is accurate, extending shared use paths, enhancing pedestrian crossings. That was a huge, those are all huge components of what our previous input has been, then on roadway speed and design. Reduction of speeds, speed and addressing noise through roadway design. Coordination um with CH in the process of designing, Wasatch Boulevard has been a huge part. Reducing shoulder width, designing should be unique to evoke Boulevard feel, that's been a big emphasis point, that. Not treating Wasatch Boulevard as an arterial, but as a Boulevard feel road, which is a gateway element. To the canyons um that would also be um conducive to enhancing access and pedestrian elements. Then traffic calming measures and not adding capacity before it's warranted. More summary bullet points, enhanced bus comments, uh promote transit, disincentivize personal vehicle use at peak times. Bus solution yields lowest travel times, we focus on all the bus alternative components, future flexibility for extra buses. To be used throughout the valley year round, not just at specific times, and better long-term investment uh if planned properly. Our Gondola comments, um once again, we've been in opposition, it's incompatible with our Wasatch Boulevard master plan. The location does not resolve any traffic issues on high-traffic days and doesn't remove canyon traffic from Wasatch Boulevard. The Gondola parking will be underutilized at non-peak times, Gondola does not scale or provide flexibility. And longer travel times than bus or personal vehicles, once again, more of our comments, move on. These are some slides that Councilmember Burrell asked that I include in this on what the visual impacts would be. Um and of the proposed Gondola and and what that would in- include, go ahead to the next slide, this is a little bit. Better um element, which is gives you a visual of the impacts of the canyons.
And if if I may, before you go to the next slide, I just want to bring everyone's attention. But this illustrated was uh put together between, this was a fifteen hundred parking stall garage. It's now been nearly doubled in size, so you have this humongous uh commercial parking garage. At the gateway to our big and little Cottonwood Canyons is something that cannot be underscored.
Okay, so here's recommendations that we we are putting out to you right now related to this. We we have till October seventeenth to provide public input to uh UDOT on this. The these are the recommendations we're looking at, this this is just the categories, I'm gonna get into more specifics here. So one would be reiterate points made previously, expand the Gondola parking impact. As far as our our input on the impacts that it's going to have, the mayor's already mentioned our concern. E- even beyond, we've been against the Gondola, but additional impacts going from fifteen hundred to twenty five parking stalls. Bus phasing effort and then lack of consideration to local impact, let me get specific into this, move to the next, and I'm about done, and then I'll let you provide input. So reiterate points, the points that we just talked about that we'd already submitted to them. C H feels most direct impact of any E I S decision. We need to re- reiterate that point. Adopted Wasatch master plan to formalize priorities. We adopted that. We wanna make sure that they implement. Or 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 address issues in our Wasatch Boulevard master plan consistently opposed to the all Gondola options. Is some of our previous points, we wanna reemphasize that. Corridor design and reduce speeds emphasize that element as well. And then a strong need for C H to play a significant role in roadway design. We feel these points are all things that need to be um previous points that need to be emphasized. Then on the expanded note, go go back very quick. On the expanded Gondola parking impact. Once again, these are recommendations. More parking will exacerbate the corridor traffic issues on peak days. We feel like that needs to be a point made once again to UDOT with this decision. Delays to get to the Gondola hub will result in vehicles not using the Gondola. We feel like that's an important point to think about. More parking will lead to lower level of service on peak days. And there'll be a self-inflicted need to widen the roadway, which we don't feel that they should be even looking at at this point. Transit hub should be outside of the Wasatch corridor. Um that's something Councilmember Burrell has constantly emphasized in my conversations with her and other conversations. The Gondola travel time is likely to exceed the vehicular travel time. So basically, all of these elements make it. The the Gondola option is not making sense, especially with the impacts in our community. Can you move on to the next? Bus phasing effort, we we providing more detailed description of the bus phasing strategy. Bus phasing should be done as a priority with creative solutions to incenta- incentivize ridership. And propose a well-detailed innovative bus solution. And really, hopefully, if you do that. It may prompt that as resolving the concerns that have been prompted by the E I S. Tolling transit priority, creative resort partnerships, all of these things need to be implemented. Develop a year-round plan to utilize bus investment through the year. Uh beyond Little Cottonwood Resort demand, and this includes flexibility in the approach. Is a better investment of public funds and create less negative local impact. And then regarding our local impact, and we have several residents that are here. That have huge concerns in these areas that we feel like we need to emphasize this. Consideration of the local impact and that there has not been the priority given to us as the community that's most impacted. And we wanna communicate that. Neighborhood access is greatly impacted by a five-lane highway design and twenty-five-hundred stall garage at Lakai. That that's a huge element with the neighborhoods and the impacts that will occur there. A better option was available that provided the same solution. Our quality of life for our residents, safety and neighborhood character are greatly impacted. We wanna emphasize these things. And then the important component of the Wasatch uh master plan, those components in that plan need to be reemphasized. Go to the next slide. That's all. That's it. So so we're recommending to shape a letter. In preparation of our input for the October seventeen, these are our recommendation points. Happy to add any additional things, any things that you you feel like needs to be emphasized, but we need to. Um what we would like to do is get your input tonight and then we'll shape a draft letter. Once again, we have recommendations on these points that we'll distribute to council. And eventually, we could even have another conversation if we need to on the letter prior to October seventeenth submittal. But we feel these really touch the basis of what we hear from the residents, the needs of the residents, the neighborhoods. And the impacts of of this choice that they've um identified.
Awesome. Thank you, Tim. So so that's a lot of data. So we have about thirty minutes uh as a council to uh highlight specific items that we want. Uh to 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 reemphasize and really, really emphasize to you Doug um in our comment to them. How we feel. So so let's take some time and uh and and start with the, you know, I don't wanna get too into weeds. Because if we do that, we're gonna talk about one issue and for thirty minutes it's gonna be over. So let's.
Just go ahead. Points of clarification. Go back one. Um so the second last one, the hub should be outside the Wasatch corridor. I'm. Yes, I'm. We have talked about transit hub. A transit oriented development at the gravel pit. So that at least phrase that way seems to be a little bit of a. Catch wanting to, so I just wanted to see how that, I mean, I agree.
Yeah, the E I S scope area starts.
So outside of the E I S scope, so maybe we just reword like that, so. That's that's the first thing that came to my head is like we, but anyway, because that supposedly is planned and. Or at least there's there's money there to do that. And and that is a great place if people are gonna come from far away and park because it's. Close to the freeway, which is high capacity. The road up from the freeway to there is high capacity. That's a great place to park an additional twenty-five hundred cars.
What's the proposed uh capacity of that?
The initial tower would be fifteen hundred.
I'm talking about.
I don't think that's the.
But certainly.
That's what I'm talking about. At the gravel pit at the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon. The project manager said they would start with one tower. The long-term plan was to have two parking towers at the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon. Uh and then so he proposes that the first tower be built fifteen hundred parking. In the lawn, in the.
About the first phase that we're talking about with the second phase.
We're talking, we're talking about if and when UDOT uh is able to negotiate something in the South Gravel Pit.
Yeah, so it's the south. It's not part of the the development we already approved, yeah.
So to speak.
I mean, if if we're gonna if we're gonna have that many cars come. Absolutely keep them off of. Between having them stopped before Fort Union and getting on a bus.
The reality if.
Is is much preferred.
So the reality that 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 we're looking at for anyone who uh uh is unfamiliar with where the choke points are. Uh ninety-four hundred south uh can become a a real choke point. Well before you even get to the ninety-eight hundred south and Old Wasatch Boulevard intersection. Okay, uh then there's another choke point. We all know the Horix Fort Union study studied uh the choke point of people coming from the west along Fort Union Boulevard. And then um as uh this is our Councilman Bracken points out, uh there's also a choke choke point where people come off of the I two fifteen. On uh S R one ninety that turns into S R two ten at the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon and proceeds through Little Cottonwood Canyon. So one of the things that in the long term, I hope that our city gets behind and maybe our council isn't prepared tonight or in the next two weeks. To consider this, but the way to lower vehicle miles traveled and to truly take a chunk out of these problems of. Foothill congestion. And when I say foothill congestion, I'm referring to those three pinch points. Fort Union, ninety-four hundred south and coming in from the north on on uh from six two hundred south. Uh is to have not fancy intermodal hubs, which UDOT would say EGADs, they're each, you know, fifty million dollars to build. But to start thinking about repurposing, think in a twenty-first century smart planning way and think about the many. Strip mall parking lots that dot Salt Lake Valley that could be rather inexpensively have small sections. Of the unused portions repurposed as transit and carpool hubs. This would take a collective will, not only from our city, but the cities of Salt Lake County, Salt Lake County itself and the state legislature. But I would welcome our council to try to envision something long-term. That is gonna really alleviate things because building a fifteen hundred parking stall uh tower at mouth of Big Cottonwood would be. Uh helpful in in some ways. Uh and it certainly is what we've been led to believe for the last three years would be what would happen if there was gonna be any kind of parking stall built. It would be there. Now suddenly, we've gone, as the mayor said, from fifteen hundred parking stall garage at the mouth of Little Cottonwood Canyon. To a twenty-five hundred. This induces demand, not only traffic through Cottonwood Heights, but the neighborhoods of granite and sandy. This is a time for our extended community to come together around a vision. That not only solves transit challenges for recreationalists. But for the many people that reside in Salt Lake County who don't have east-west connection. Uh our our commuters of our southeast region here that includes eastern Draper, Sandy and Cottonwood Heights. We do not have a transit that's viable to get up to the East Bench Cultural District.
So Ellen, so so I agree completely with what you're saying, actually, but so how do we, so what we're trying to do in this next twenty-five minutes is frame. What what we want to say to you, Dot, in this, in.
Well, and I like I like a lot of the wording. I wanna really commend the staff. I think that what you've put together is a great uh base. Uh one of the other concerns for me uh specifically that you dot has uh uh stated uh in numerous places. Is the removal of trees along Wasatch Boulevard within our beloved. Gateway to Big and Little Cottonwood Canyons. They have stated specifically that that the way that they are going to accommodate. Uh better commuter uh service for southbound commuters is to remove trees. They're referring to the old growth pine trees that we treasure. Those will be removed in favor of road widening. They will either widen to uh to the equivalent of six lanes or the equivalent of seven lanes. Uh seven lane equivalent is for their five lane and a a six lane equivalent width is for what they call their imbalanced lane. So if they phase in an imbalanced two lane for the benefit of southbound commuters. Uh we actually are in the process of of rechecking their data. Uh there's some real concerns that they're using both antiquated and maybe even incorrect data to come up with these projections. Uh of needing by twenty fifty, the volume that they're indicating. When you've got, maybe or just one last thing, when, so so I know you're looking just for language, but I think we need to also include something about. Uh you know, beyond aesthetics, we are looking for preservation for the existing mature pine trees.
And that's what I was just gonna get to. So so that's the bullet point, I think, is is exactly.
Thank you.
I I like reiterating the points before to say, these are the concerns we brought up to you that were. Just dismissed and we have concerns about these being dismissed because these are, these are the.
But don't seem to be addressed.
Exactly, that are important to our residents.
So maybe maybe we start with. Um emphasizing the middle and end with the fact that we feel disrespected. That we that we had concerns with a fifteen hundred parking garage at the. Lakai Station. And not only did they disregard that, they they increased it to twenty-five hundred. So uh.
I would just like to also emphasize the fracturing of uh this community. Uh District Four already ha- is very problematic for people uh who live on both sides, not just the east side of Wasatch Boulevard. But the people who live on the west side of Wasatch Boulevard to access the places and things they need to, whether it's grocery stores, parks, schools. Uh so so this is beyond a a regional concern uh and uh uh this is a a fracturing.
Well, well, I mean, what we're trying to do here is talk about an E I S. We're not, we're not talking about forty years of people building houses and then also actively. Saying no to any type of commercial or business development east of Wasatch Boulevard. What we're dealing with is the E I S. And how we need to respond to it. So I think we need to make sure that the focus is on things that have to do with this E I S. And these and and this project.
Well, this most certainly, they the uh Wasatch Boulevard expansion is a key element of the Little Cottonwood Canyon E I S.
So that's kind of what you were saying. So maybe we need some statements focusing on the on the imbalanced. Uh three-lane imbalance. Is there anything that we want to add specific to what they chose for that? Ingress egress, Doug.
One one thing I that we spoke in great detail about is trying to get these twenty-four or twenty-five days. The problems lessened on that.
I love that. That's actually something I think we really need to highlight that we're talking.
Forty to twenty-six days. Uh right now, that's that was what we're talking about. It would take them two years to increase the bus capacity. And it would take them eighteen months or more to do the tolling. We don't know what that would, how much problem, you know, that would mitigate of those twenty-six days.
So so maybe a statement really emphasizing that we expect. The tolling and the enhanced busing to 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 receive valid metrics. In 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 whether or not it alleviates uh peak day traffic before.
Funding to.
How much is that a day?
That's.
Yeah, there's a lot of ways to look at it.
But no, I.
But I think it's a really good.
I'll emphasize on the phasing. Because. You're right, it's it's what, seven or eight percent of the days when it's really bad, it's bad, but uh there's some.
They give a statistic that.
You know, having reserved spots kept a lot of people out of it, not having a reserved spot, I mean.
Or incentivized carpooling and.
Well, exactly. Those those types of things are easier to do. Um they're certainly a lot less expensive. Um they're not gonna, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna. You know, solve everything probably, but we um but yeah, I mean, that one, there was one other on the other page, just.
Is is what Scott's looking, is there anything that, I was just gonna say, is there anything that he didn't address that we'd like?
Yes, I I would like, I would like for Cottonwood Heights to state that before uh you dot uh um. Would do this two-lane imbalanced, which would induce traffic through our neighborhood there. Is that they would uh look at transit, oh, you know, alleviating the commuter traffic. By viable transit, and I'm not talking about necessarily viable transit on Wasatch Boulevard. We already have existing north-south arterials here in the southeast quadrant of Salt Lake Valley. And by doing a viable commuter service on Highland that connects on two fifteen up to the East Bench Cultural District. It could readily alleviate this need to build out Wasatch Boulevard. So I I would like to see some kind of mention of that 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 there was no scanning done. Of viable transit alternatives to diminish the need, the forecasted need. Cause again, right now, there's no level of service lower than about a C. On Wasatch Boulevard through Cottonwood Heights. So we're talking about, maybe what we need to talk about is the Bengal Golden Hills Corridor. Because I I agree with Councilman Bracken, it gets a little bit confusing. But I think everybody needs to remember, we're talking about a two-point-six-mile stretch from the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon. To what some people call the high-T intersection or the V in the road that goes off to Lakai. That two-point-six-mile stretch, uh the the reason that UDOT is expanding that is doesn't have anything to do with ski traffic. That is for commuters. And I think that we need to ask as a city for a viable, not based on old ridership numbers. Because old transit ridership numbers are low because it's never been a viable way to get north-south.
Reinvestment into transit.
I mean, Bible. Well, I mean, honestly, that's something you're wrote, the you talked about. U T A has park and rides or ski ski bus pickup areas throughout the county. Um I check with, they'll they'll know how. What how effective they are, how many people they actually pick up.
Yeah, they're not viable because they have too many transfers and they're they're.
Well, the ninety-fourth one is very highly used, the ninety-fourth.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about the two existing.
But they're they're more throughout the county.
Yeah.
And uh I mean, at a certain point, I mean, if if the problem is that they're not viable because of X. Then you have to have a solution that does something different.
Right, it would be on those peak times, which we know very well, and it's approximately twenty days a year. On those peak times, there would be the ability to get on a direct shuttle, not one that globbs along and you transfer two or three times. The one that gets you directly either to the mouth of the canyon or directly to the resort itself.
I.
That's only twenty days out of the year.
Done this for the University of Utah and Weaver State, so it can be done, but. As stated, it has to be based on ridership. If the ridership isn't there, they won't do it, but they can, they do have that ability based on the data that they collect.
I think you have done that. I think it's a bullet point that we can all get behind that that that, you know, our reinvestment or a better look at transit opportunities. So anything else, Doug? Are you, you have anything on your mind, Sean?
I think this is well done. I I think we've stated our.
But I like to go with this, yeah, as far as we stated before and reiterate that. And add a little bit, I don't I don't know if you say disrespect to us, but I would.
So so how do we? Say, hey, look, so one of the things that I've made perfectly clear is is you dot. Has a mission and their mission is to provide. A higher level of service moving cars from point A to C. So I think we need to respect, that's why, you know, that's what they're doing. And 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 I think if we respect that, maybe they'll respect where we're coming more. So I I agree with you. We don't wanna be disrespectful.
A new mission this last legislative session. And that was to handle large-scale projects with transit.
Yeah.
Um so. You know.
It's it's disappointed.
Goes in and.
No, I wouldn't say that was too strong.
Disappointed, too strong work.
Maybe.
I think our residents of their bill disrespect, I think. Yeah.
I have one question. When it went from fifteen to twenty-five hundred, was an explanation given for that? Because what's the capacity of the canyons? The ski resource.
They refuse to do a capacity study. The U S Forest Service indicated that they do a visitor capacity study and that they were willing to move that from the year twenty twenty. Uh, four to the year twenty twenty three. But again, a visitor capacity study, uh. You know, how detailed will that really give us in the winter time?
The Forest Service might add something related to that.
We talked about doing something like that. Been years ago.
Well, a lot of people have been demanding a capacity study to which you dot has said no.
Okay, can I finish my statement? They talked about it, they did it, they shied away from it because it got to be just. Too many different ways to count, too many different ways to evaluate, too many different ways to do things to where they didn't feel like they were going to get numbers that. People could even remotely agree on.
Well, let me put it this way, the parking lots of Snowbird and Alta get filled up. So. So it's, you know, do the ski resorts, sure, the ski resorts, do they want to make another twenty five or thirty percent more than they do now by having people arrive on Gondola and not have to build parking lots for more cars? I think if I I was running Snowbird, I would go for that. But the core here is that to have taxpayer dollars funding. Uh delivering customers to Snowbird and Alta twenty days out of the year is unconscionable. These are taxpayer dollars and they do not be spent.
This agree with.
You know, so so.
That's that's never been an issue. It's it's been a matter.
So so the the resorts say that they can take higher capacity, but uh.
Well, my my point was. Getting to a number of this is what can or. It's it's not as simple as, it's not even as simple as counting how many cars can go down the road.
Well, the Forest Service has stated that that they feel that our trails in the summertime can take more visitors. That's been their answer. Yeah, what is the will of the people? In fact, one other thing, Mayor, if before we leave this subject of Eric, maybe we're not ready yet, but. You know, is this article for the uh October newsletter? Um, I would like it to include uh the uh comments of our elected officials, not only within this room, but within our region, who have made very astute observations. And represent the people from the town of Alta, uh Sandy, uh uh Salt Lake County, Salt Lake City. Um, uh in our next newsletter so that our our residents can better understand a more regionalized uh picture. Does anybody oppose having a little beefier article?
Comments that were in there, I didn't.
You may not have approved of them, Councilman, but. Because you don't approve of the, I'm not saying that we are endorsing those comments.
I, should I excuse myself?
Scott, hey, just go.
I I'm seriously, should I just excuse myself? So because I apparently am not allowed to speak. That's the way that I'm feeling right now, because every time I start. You've cut me off.
I bet it doesn't feel good when you get cut off. Gee, I've never experienced that, but go ahead.
That was not. Necessary.
Yeah, this is a. So Mayor, may I, may I? Let me, first of all, on the, if we want to prepare an article, you talked about a more extensive article. Um, I worry a little bit about making it too extensive, even like the fifteen hundred words, like because you lose people when you do a two or three page. And that was would probably be what it would be. I think we could put together a pretty good article that at about seven or eight hundred words that would cover. The points that we're talking about here, correct? And and I'd like to put that together and then I can send it out to you and. Let you provide input on that. Um, and and we, you can give me your input on on this comment Councilmember Braille made on wanting to include other individuals. Outside of the city um on the regional side of things. In addition to that, so what I'm hearing, unless there's something different. The components of our recommendations that we put for, which includes reemphasizing points. And then all all of the bullet points that I've walked through, in addition to those bullet points. Including the following, um emphasis or information concerning the removal of the trees. Um, so some wording related to that. I'm feeling. Extremely disappointed from the fifteen hundred to twenty five hundred stall and and the concerns with that and the impacts. Um, related to our residents and not not hearing the residents on the concerns there.
With disrespect.
I don't mind disrespecting you. Would you rather stray away from that word?
How do you feel, Councilman Peterson?
I think disappointment is of. Less accusatory, but I mean, at this point.
So we we asked them, we said, that's our problem is the parking at that spot. And and they came back and increased it a thousand. To me, that's disrespectful.
It is, but I don't know if you want to. The problem is, we're, because you can't take backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I couldn't. But we're trying to, we, our whole goal in this is to develop a symbiotic relationship. Exactly. With you dot. And I don't know if. We're giving, they're giving us back as much as we are trying to give them. And so that's what we're trying to do is this is a joint effort. That we can try to develop this in the very best, least intrusive way we can.
If I may, oh, sorry.
No, as I say, and you want to keep those channels of dialogue open. We don't want to pose that.
And and I, to emphasize these two points. One of the big elements that we're going to have to be involved in and that we emphasize previous, we emphasize previously and we're planning on emphasizing again. Is our involvement in that design of Wasatch Boulevard. We have to, we have to be at the table as a partner with them in that.
Exactly. We 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 gain nothing by cutting off the communication.
Okay, so extremely disappointed regarding that issue. Then there was, there was a point about, and I think we talked about this to an extent, but the fracturing. Once again, the access and and ingress and egress, and we can add wording on the fracturing. Of of the east side and west side with with whatever occurs there without effective design on Wasatch Boulevard. Okay? And then the next one is um the point of the twenty four to twenty six days. Making sure that tolling, enhanced busing alternatives. Uh, solution alternatives are evaluated before funding the Gondola, so that phasing component.
Well, if I may, I think what I heard Councilman Peterson and the mayor echo. Uh, was that we want to see the implementation, not the consideration, but we want the immediate implementation within the next eighteen months. Is that right?
Yeah, and yeah, and we want, we want to see measurable. Uh, ways to judge that before we go to Gondola.
And we were hoping sooner, but obviously there's been lots and that's.
It takes eighteen to twenty four months to get a bus. We know that. The tolling can't happen before this, before the R O D comes, so that's not going to happen before this winter. So we're looking at the following winter before we can even start looking at tolling. And and probably the following one.
Things they've done the last couple of years.
Yeah.
If it doesn't snow this year, maybe it won't be as. No, I shouldn't say.
Be careful what you wish for there.
No, I, we need a hammer.
I would say, I I know this was in your uh presentations, but I would even highlight more. That we are the most affected city. This affects us more than anybody else.
Okay.
But but also, what do you think though, Mayor, um that that the inclusiveness of saying. Along with our neighbors Granite and Sandy, we all suffer. I mean, I. I almost wonder whether it brings more power to it to to include our neighbors.
Well, I would, I would say that we're elected to represent Collin Heights City. This is the city's thing and we should be speaking for the city.
It affects us a lot more than most cities, doesn't it?
It does.
Granite and Sandy and Holiday all have representation or they can submit their their comments.
Yeah, and then they, yeah.
Um, I'll keep going.
So my last two is the one you just said, the highlight more impact. That we're the most impacted city. But then the last point that I had written down was. Um, the viable transit alternatives to alleviate needs and and emphasize that point as well. So tho- those are the things that. I've heard in addition to what we have.
If I may, just you need the word commuter in there. A lot of people don't understand that.
So I would, it it would be really helpful if you just give us a little direction on the newsletter, especially related to. If you want to have the additional comments, because I have a very tight timeframe to get this newsletter letter. Well.
October.
Because I've, I've just submitted my art.
Well, no, this would, this would be, this would not be in place.
Oh, I'm not, no, I'm not worried about that. What I'm saying is, is Lindsay's in there right now. She's building this right now.
I I've told her that there's the potential we would have an article if the council wants to, or we could do it for November if you want, but.
Well, we promised constituents we would do it in September, so we're a month behind now, so I really would like to press rock over.
I think I. I think we can get it done because of the condensed mind if you'd like. That's fine.
So we, we're going to, the the article's going to focus on these discussion points and the ones that you've provided. But I need, I need input on what quotes that you would like to see. That's the last thing that I.
I I think that's, I like emphasizing. The leadership of Godwood Heights versus having other voices. Doesn't have the impact he has on us. I just, I feel strongly about that. Others, as Councilman Bracken said, they can do their share too. And it's, it's kind of like that guerrilla market. If everybody's doing their part. The noise is going to get loud enough, but I think we have to focus it on.
If I, if I, if I may, just make one quick comment. I can understand some of my colleagues don't share my view. But I think that our residents are hungry to get a comprehensive holistic understanding and people like Galen Benyon, our representative, House Representative. Our state senator, uh Kathleen Reeby, uh you know, these are hardly outsiders. These are people that our constituents have have voted for. Um, I think it's interesting that the mayor of Alta, the mayor of Sandy, you know, our Salt Lake County mayor have been vociferous. Uh against the Gondola. I think it'd be helpful because a lot of my District Four uh constituents feel very disheartened. They say to me, we, it's hopeless. And I say to them, it is not hopeless because we have this comprehensive holistic group of people that that are looking out. I just, you know, learned that our state Senator Colomar, he's also jumped on the bandwagon. I I think this would be heartening for. You know, if if I'm outnumbered, so be it, but I just want to make sure you're clear on why. I'm not saying their voices are more important than ours. But I do believe in seeing things holistically and comprehensively, so that's, I just want to.
I think, I think that's completely fair, and I I I think, Sean, your point's good. And and this is how our discussions have to go. I'm not going to put up with disrespect between the, between the council. I'm not going to do it. We can be respectful and respect other people's opinions without being contentious. And I'm just telling you, we're not going to continue this if it happens again. So we'll, we'll go to different, different ways to discuss items. So Scott, I'm not going to go there right now. So what we're going to do, we're a little bit uh late getting into a. Well, that's, I'm going to move on to. A review of calendars and upcoming events. Uh, first, we're going to have a monster mass that will be held on October twenty eighth from five to seven with the Cottonwood Heights. Community Recreation Center. Uh, Light the Heights will be held on November twenty eighth. It's crazy that that's actually already on our calendar from six P M to nine P M here at City Hall. Future city council meetings, uh October fourth and eighteenth, November first and fifteenth. December sixth and twentieth, all starting here with our business work session at four P M. Unless otherwise noticed, and then we have future planning commission meetings, October fifth, October nineteenth and November second. Unless otherwise noticed, all. Then we also have a trunk or treat on October thirty first, starting at uh three P M here in the City Hall parking lot. So. Now, uh with that, we do have an item to discuss in a closed meeting, and so uh that will involve property acquisition. And Scott, I'll let you get us into that.
You're talking to me?
Yes.
You talking to me?
Uh, we'll closely open a session, open a closed session, the discussion, property and acquisition.
A second.
All favors, yeah.
I.
Any opposed?
Okay.